Okay, all right, we've got that done. Item seven is committee appointments, and I'd call on you for the voting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens.
Good evening.
Good evening. I believe, I don't know if it's appropriate now, Jeffrey, that one of our council members said they were going to recuse themselves from this vote. Is it appropriate for them to do that at this time?
It's going to have to be done at some point. I think, you know, announce the candidates, and then I think that would be the appropriate time for that council person to let them know the conflict.
Okay, all right. Mr. Efrem Boski has submitted a volunteer application for the Library Advisory Committee, which is enclosed in your packets. Mr. Efrem is eligible, and there is currently a vacancy on the committee with a term that expires in May 2025. Earlier, City Council took a ballot vote, and Mr. Boski received a unanimous vote, except for the one that wanted to recuse himself. Therefore, I respectfully request City Council consider a motion to appoint Efrem Boski to the Library Advisory Committee.
And Councilman Stabak, I think you were going to enforce the council recuse yourself.
Yes, I'm going to ask the council to recuse me from that vote. I didn't vote, but just to make it official, he is related to me, and I recuse myself from that vote.
Okay, that's satisfactory. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying, well, we got to have a motion to appoint this gentleman to the committee. Do you hear such a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to consider Mr. Efrem Boski to the Library Advisory Committee and state it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Bell, and second by Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. Is any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Mr. Boski would be appointed to the Library Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call on our planning, Ms. Anderson, to guide us through a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you tonight a rezoning request. City Council's consideration of zoning map amendments or legislative decisions approved by a simple majority vote before adopting, amending, or repealing any ordinance or development regulation authorized by North Carolina General Statute 160D, City Council shall hold a legislative On June 7, 2024, a rezoning application was submitted by Michael Carroll of Rent Co. Properties, LLC. He is the applicant and property owner of parcels located along Church and Carter Streets in Roanoke Rapids. Between the two streets lies three parcels with a combined 5.81 acres. Each parcel has approximately 700 plus or minus feet of frontage along Church and Carter Streets. All three parcels have street frontage along Highway 158 totaling approximately 550 plus or minus feet. The current use of the parcels is residential, and as shown on the aerial photo provided, the land is currently developed with single-family dwellings. The current zoning for this location is R6 residential, and the requested zoning for the properties is B3 commercial. When making a legislative decision for a rezoning request, there are many impacts to consider: the potential uses, neighboring properties, the general public, traffic, and utilities, as well as the overall neighborhood character and schools. Items to omit from consideration are ethnicity, religion, income, and whether the properties or uses are rented or owned. Provided on your screens are street views of Church and Carter Streets in their current Surrounding the location of the rezoning request, there's a mix of commercial and residential uses. In the immediate area, you will find properties also zoned R6 residential, which makes up the majority of the surrounding parcels. The R6 zone is designed to accommodate single-family dwelling units with a minimum lot square footage of 6,000 square feet. To the west and southwest of the properties, you'll notice R3 residential zoning district, which is commonly known for high-density residential, such as two-family residences like duplexes, and multifamily dwelling units such as apartments and townhomes. At the intersection of Roanoke Avenue and Highway 158, flowing both north and south is B4 commercial. This district accommodates the widest range of commercial activities with no minimum density. Southeast is more B4 commercial, also located at the corner of Horner and Highway 158. The applicant's requested zoning is B3 commercial. The B3 commercial district is designed to accommodate a mixture of both residential and commercial uses, but it does exclude single-family dwellings. The commercial uses that primarily fall within the 3.000 classification of the Table of Permissible Uses are things like offices, clerical, research services, and et cetera. They're all allowed within the B3 district. The district also constitutes the transition or buffer zones between major arterials or more intensively developed commercial areas and residential districts. Staff believes the requested B3 zoning district would be suitable for this area based on its surroundings. Should the zoning, excuse me, should the rezoning be approved, any construction and site plans submitted for development would have to be evaluated by city staff and the Development Review Committee. The DRC, Development Review Committee, includes the Roanoke Rapids Sanitary District, North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Works, Dominion Energy, the Fire Department, the Roanoke Rapids Planning and Development Department, and Code Enforcement. Traffic considerations for Highway 158 would be reviewed and approved by NC DOT, and Roanoke Rapids Public Works would be responsible for issuing driveway permits for city streets such as Church and Carter Street. There are no specific utility considerations that should negatively impact the properties. The area is served by Dominion Energy and the Roanoke Rapids Sanitary District. All connections, extensions, and responsibilities for services will be the responsibility of the developer. Other items of consideration that will be evaluated are screening, draining, stormwater retention, and detention. Opaque screening between commercial and residential uses would be required at the burden of the commercial developer. Typical opaque screening requires a height of at least eight feet tall, which could consist of a wall, fence, landscaped earth burn, or some sort of vegetation. The site would also be evaluated for water supply, for firefighting operations, and driveways that meet the requirements for apparatus ingress and egress. Legislative decisions require property owner notification and advertisement of the public hearing. Public notice was advertised in the Daily Herald on Saturday, July 6, and Saturday, July 13. Written notice was sent by first-class mail to the property owners within 100 feet on Monday, July 1. The site was also posted. At this point, the planning department has not received any comments or inquiries regarding the request. I will add, at the last city council member, we did have a member of that community come by and wish to speak at that point, so they may be present tonight to speak on this. Staff believes the request is reasonable, considering the size and nature of the tract, the consistency of the zoning with the land use plan, the degree of change in the zoning, the allowable uses from the surrounding area, and the benefits and detriments for the owner, neighbors, and surrounding community. Planning staff recognizes that a change from R6 to B3 represents a degree of difference, but there are several existing surrounding commercial and residential lots with many similarities in permissible uses. Planning staff recommends in favor of the request and find it to be consistent with the area land uses and supported by the comprehensive plan. Some of the supporting factors of the comprehensive plan are: to support infill development; to provide effective buffering and/or landscaping where commercial development adjoins existing or planned residential uses; utilize mixed uses, mixed-use areas, excuse me; to encourage developers to utilize thoroughfares, natural topography, features to define the boundaries of a neighborhood; to protect, enhance, and encourage a high quality of life, image, and cultural amenities as an effective approach to economic development; and lastly, for economic development efforts, should encourage the revitalization and reuse of currently unused or underutilized structures, sites, and infrastructures. On Thursday, July 11, the planning board held a public meeting to review the request. Following brief discussion, the planning board voted for a favorable recommendation to City Council for adoption of the rezoning request. There are two requested motions for the rezoning request this evening: a motion and a vote for a statement of consistency, and a motion and a vote concerning the final decision to adopt the rezoning request. Subject to your questions, this concludes my presentation. It would also now be appropriate to open the public hearing and receive citizen comment.
Okay, at this time, I would declare that the public hearing would be open. Anyone that would like to speak on this matter can come forward. We'd like for you to state your name and where you live at.
Good evening. My name is Shawanda Bowser. I currently reside off Everett School Road, but I'm here on behalf of my mother, Ruby Mason, that stays off of 313 East Littleton Road, right down Highway 158 next to Church Street. I was here a couple of city council meetings ago with my concerns, and of course, my concerns are still the same. Now that we're rezoning and we're looking at this new commercial property, talking about businesses that may be coming in, or office buildings, or what the structure could be, I'm still just concerned of the welfare of the elderly that stays in the community that's surrounding those houses that's going to be there, what kind of traffic would be coming through there, what kind of business are you talking about opening. It's still the same concerns. Not only that, we have our church that is across the street. Is it going to cause a lot of confusion if we're trying to have service, or if we want to do certain things? We just want to state our concern and say we're just really concerned about it, you know, especially with it being rezoned at this time, and you all are going to make a decision. I just feel that the community wasn't involved in this decision, other ones who were surrounding that area. Maybe if there could have been some input, you know, you have a church that's sitting right across the street. Maybe we could have come together, invited people there, and we could have discussed this situation and see what does the community like to have in that order. I do know on the property that's adjacent to the church over there, they're supposed to be putting another set of family group homes there, or, you know, single homes. So why can't we do the same thing in that same area? Why does it have to be? Why does it have to be considered a new district or go into this new zone when we could build some more houses there and have people to stay there, and they could own that property instead of renting, you know? So it's just mind-boggling, and just trying to be here for the people and state that because that's our community. We've been there for years and years. I'm 52 years old, and Hodges Town is my heart. That's where I grew up and where I was raised. And there's a lot of them that's in here that was in the same area, and we don't want to kind of see it change. We want to kind of keep it the same. We don't want to lose those streets. They have memorabilia there for us. And if something else could be done to help that, that would be wonderful. I don't know how I can change your mind. I don't know what I can do to do that, but all I can do is just get up here and voice my concern and say, yes, I'm concerned about who's going to be next door to my mom's house. She's elderly. She's been sick, you know? At nighttime, do I have to worry about who's going to be stealing her property or anything? Or just the same as her neighbors that surrounds the area. I can only speak for myself, but I can be an advocate for my people that is in my community. And I hope that they feel the same way, and I hope that what I've said this evening, it would take into some consideration. Then I have concerns about the cost of the property. Why is it so much? Who came up with that number? You know, 699,000 for that property, for it to be sold? Then if they sell the property, what are they going to do? Are the houses going to sit there for years and years before they tear them down? What are those things? What are the guidelines? What is going to be coming forth on that term? But like I said, you know, you had a church that was across the street. Maybe that was something that could have been discussed with the church to see if we want to purchase the property, and we could have did something over there adjacent or something. But I just feel that the community was left out. No input or anything. So that's my two cents. Thank you very much for listening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and to the audience. My name is Florine Bell. I am a community organizer and activist respective to Roanoke Rapids. My birth occurred in the Roanoke Rapids Hospital. I'm a World War II baby. On Roanoke Avenue, Roanoke Rapids Hospital, while residing with my parents at 316 East Littleton Road, at Highway 158 in the historic African-American community known geographically as Hodges Town. Without intent to offend, our community was also referred to by insiders and outsiders, affectionately or not, as colored town. Traditionally, both free and enslaved residents have existed south of the railroad tracks of Roanoke Rapids in the historic communities of Hodges Town, Lincoln Heights, Sawmill Line, Shale Line, Shanty Town, and others since the early 1800s. To the early 1900s, black families fled the servitude of rural farms and relocated to Hodges Town and other black conclaves to pursue more productive jobs. Hodges Town was named after the Hodges, who was among the first to build tenant houses in the community at Highway 158 for domestic and mill workers. These underserved areas of Hodges Town are not just physical spaces, but the living embodiment of a unique and rich cultural heritage. They are a testament to the resilience, empowerment, and unity that these communities have fostered and maintained over generations. Upholding the heritage of these communities is not just about preserving buildings, but about safeguarding the stories of families who have lived on Spring Street, Carter Street. Incidentally, my grands were the Carters and the Hockaday's. We have Wright Meyer Village in the area. We have Ivy Town. We have the Pines, the Webb Hill, and Church Street, honorably named in honor of the First Baptist Church, a church where I attended for summer camp and other service observance. Although housing redevelopment has been needed in this area for decades, it will undoubtedly cause displacement and hardship for families who have resided in the homes specific to the Church Spring Street and Carter Street areas for a lifetime. Therefore, many citizens are concerned about the risk of displacement, traffic congestion, and possible criminality due to the incoming questionable housing infrastructure and additional commercial-related development, which can adversely affect citizens to the degree of no return. There is a promising opportunity for a more collective vision of economic revitalization that honors the history and legacy of the Highway 158 corridor. This action could involve hosting, community meetings, where local leaders and citizens can discuss equitable economic redevelopment with investors. Such action can act as a shield to the community and some unwanted management. Equitable redevelopment is guided by individuals and citizens who know these changes, instilling a sense of hope and optimism in the community, realistically and summarily. And the advantage to move forward with investment in the discussion area for the proposed rezon to preserve the characteristic environment and historic cultural heritage. Thank you.
Ms. Bell?
Okay, well, his name...
I think it's the other page.
I think he just...
I think he didn't...
Now, Gina, y'all got a trick to me.
Ms. Spencer?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, fellow citizens. I just wanted to get up and say that, you know, I am a member, my name is Goram Spencer, and I resided for some Wright Meyer Drive in Roanoke Rapids, and I attend the First Baptist Church to Webb Hill Street, right across from where the development, the rezoning wants, has applied for. And I have just expressed my concerns also about the elderly citizens that are living there. I don't know if they can't afford, you know, if they're moved out, are they going to be able to afford to rent somewhere else? You know, if there was, could be a feasible solution to not have rezoned. There were going to be units there for the elderly? If it's rezoned for that, could the city council have a stipulation that there would be certain units there for the elderly, the senior citizens, that they could afford? And then the, well, how do I put this? When they are developing now, you see that they have certain codes, how they have to keep the fronts up, that they're not, just anything can come in. A lot of this, the, you know, they look like homes, when, you know, the commercial businesses, they have this look, and so would that be stipulated in that, that it just, any kind of way, square, come in any kind of way? And also the traffic in front of church, how is that going to, we have Sunday, so we have other meetings during the week, is that going to affect, you know, us at the church? So those are my concerns.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Mr. Ferbey?
Good to have you this evening.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, community. It's good to be here this afternoon, and I have a couple of things before I get into that. First of all, I thank you guys for electing Councilwoman Bryant as the mayor pro temp. I know she'll do a good job, but I have something for Councilwoman Bryant, and that is that the mayor doesn't have any more cruises for the next two years. That's a inside joke, guys. But anyway, my reason for being here, up here, is that, do you know, or have you received anything from Mr. Carroll about the intentions of the property? And that's one of my questions, and I'm not sure if you have an answer, but if you do, I would like to hear that, and if you're able to answer that.
Did you say the intentions of the property?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant is present, so if you want to present your questions, and then if the applicant wants to respond, we can do so, make your questions noted on the record, and then that'll give the applicant an opportunity to respond.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll hold that until the applicant, and I'll direct that to the applicant as well. My next question is, does Mr. Carroll have any other properties within the city that is viewed or could be viewed to see what types of, and I'll call it landlord for lack of another word, he is, and how he has handled that portion of it? And that may be directed to whomever, or to include the applicant. And the last part is the B3. As we well know, B3 is a wide permitted use, and I don't know if you have a map of all the permissible uses in the B3 that is viewable, but if so, you know, we'd like to kind of look at that. But the main thing is, could there have been another residential type of application rather than a B3? Since B3 is such a wide use, and that draws a lot of concern from the community whenever that wide use come about. So could there have been another more appropriate use for, and also residential, even duplex, if that's the case? We've heard the questions from the community, and that may be directed to the applicant as well as possibly you guys. Could there have been another permitted use rather than B3? So those are my questions. If I could, we could get some answers on that, we really appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Cole.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I know we're in the middle of the public hearing, but I wanted to kind of emphasize one, or to go ahead and kind of answer, or at least give some comment on one of those questions that may help the council kind of work towards its decision, and may also kind of help the public understand exactly what's being asked for here. And our planning director did a great job and actually noted it at the beginning of this, but I know for individuals in the public that are not used to this, sometimes that can kind of get lost as we kind of move into it. One of the things I'd like to emphasize is that this is a rezoning request. So if city council grants the request, it rezones the property. So regardless of what the applicant's intended use is, one of the things that city council should consider in this is all permissible uses in the rezoned classification. So just to be clear, when, if this is granted, what the applicant is essentially asking to do is to change the zoning designation of that, those parcels, those pieces of property. And so one of the things that council should consider is all permissible uses under that B3 classification, not just the specific use that the applicant wishes to put it to.
Madam Clerk, that's all the people that had signed up. Is it proper for me to ask if anyone else would like to speak at this time on this matter? You would like to speak, ma'am? Okay, please come forward and just state your name and where you live.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and the community. I'm Brenda Hardy-Powell. I have some concern about the rezoning. My cousin and I are here because our family own property on Glover Street. That's 1923 and 1931. 1923 is where I grew up. Sixty-five years ago, my father built a house there. Seventy years ago, my uncle built a house on Glover Street. And when you start talking about the rezoning, how will it affect our homes and our property? I received a letter indicating that it's 100 feet concerning the property that we have questions about. So my biggest concern, at what cost, if it's rezoning, do we lose our home and our property that's on Glover Street? How would that work? Would that be included in Carter Street and Church Street? Also, I do have some concern about the church issue. The one we raised at First Baptist Church, ever since I was 12 years old, I do have some concern about Ian and everything be placed so many feet from a church. Also, I have concern Glover Street is the only street over there that I've ever known that had, owned, housed, owned houses. Everything else over there was always rental property. It might have been one house on Jordan Street that was property-owned, but basically, everything else was rented. So back to my first question, my concern is about the ones that own property on Glover Street. At what cost do we lose our land? Once again, you know, have concern about losing land in a black community.
Can Ms. Anderson provide some information on that? I'm looking at it on the map, and it looks like the property backs up to Carter Street, I mean Glover Street, Glover Street. Is that correct?
The property does back up to Glover Street and some other surrounding streets like Spring Street. Let me see if I can pull this up here for you. As you can see, it is surrounded by Glover Street and by Spring Street. To answer some of the questions that have kind of come before council tonight by the citizens, all questions, you know, are totally understandable. I get that. The developer is looking at options. What can he do with the property? With the B3 commercial zone, one reason that we looked at that particular zoning was because it does offer both. It offers commercial development on a smaller scale versus some of the other commercial zones, like a B4, which is located, as you can see in the red here, along Roanoke Avenue and Highway 158. Those things are like restaurants and gas stations and things of that nature. So we were trying to avoid those types of items. of that nature. Um, so we were trying to avoid those types of items. Um, the B3 commercial district usually, and on a typical basis, is more of a medical field or office sort of, um, commercial development. You can see that in the table of permissible uses. Um, some items such as short-term rentals, um, multi-use facilities, those items, even though they're allowed within a B3 commercial district, still have to come back before city council to get approval for that. Um, the applicant hasn't expressed an interest in that, um, mostly just to see what his options are for that type of development. Can he do multifamily? Can he do commercial? Or is he just stuck with the R6 residential for a single family? That he just wanted to see what his options were.
Did the interested people that have come and expressed their concerns, have they, have they received any information about what we got, um, so far as what it says, like office, clerical, research, services, et cetera?
No, they did not receive that information in their letters.
Could you just expand a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
You just did some, but, but give these people some idea.
Sure.
You, you mentioned gas stations, they're in B4.
Mm-hmm.
But we're talking about B3, you know, it's just quite a difference.
I'll briefly go down.
It's both business, but it's a lot of difference, though.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. So in a B3 zone, and I'll just kind of go through this fairly briefly, um, for residential uses, things such as duplexes, two-family conversions, which is also duplexes, multifamily homes, nursing care homes, family care homes are all allowed. Um, some other uses like short-term rentals, um, that is allowed with a special use permit, um, which means that city council would have to review it and approve it and add conditions, should that be something that's requested. Um, let's see here. For sales, rentals, or equipment, um, as far as commercial development, there are some, um, very minimal uses here. Let's see. Operations designed to attract and serve customers or clients onto the premises, such as offices, like attorneys, realtors, um, insurance, stockbrokers, travel agents, things of that nature. Um, offices or clinics, or physicians or dentists. Operations such as or similar to substance abuse treatment centers, um, let's see here, banks are allowed. Schools are allowed. Churches are allowed. Let's see here. A multi-use facility, again, that requires a special use permit, so that would have to come before council. So if, if this does pass and, um, we get approved for the B3 zoning district, if someone wishes to come and do a multi-use facility, they have to come get approval from council first and can have specific conditions.
Can, can you explain for them what a multi-use facility is?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry.
Um, a multi-use facility, um, could be an array of things. Um, most of the time it's counseling-related multi-use facilities and nonprofit-related youth and or senior center activities.
What about, multi-use to me comes to mind, like some of the buildings that we have, they're rehabbing on the avenue, have retail, like, like a doctor's office or clinic or, you know, anything retail, business, very low impact.
Right.
And they may have three apartments upstairs. Is that considered multi-use?
That would not be considered multi-use under this definition.
It would not be.
This would be primarily for the use of counseling-related activities and nonprofits.
Multi-use facilities include uses that are already permissible in the zoning district. So if they wanted to have a mixed-use development, that would include multifamily apartments, and then something like nurse lawns, uh, or service-oriented types of commercial businesses combined with those. Um, that's what that allows for, um, the B3 district there. But the, you, you could combine different uses that are already allowed. You can't bring in an outside use that's not listed within the permissible uses.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir, please.
I would like to ask the attorney, uh, are we able to discuss any other properties he may have bought and improved or developed in the city?
Um, I, I think the thing to focus on here is the, again, this is a rezoning request. It's not like a special use or conditional use kind of request. And so I think probably a better focus is the potential uses, especially since, even in a situation where a developer is coming to us and saying, this is what I need this rezoned to, to this classification for, because I want to do X, Y, or Z. Um, even in that context, I would still advise city council, you have to look at all permissible uses in a rezoning request, and certainly in this case, I'm going to kind of emphasize that, um, because it, it kind of sounds like there's not a specific use in, in mind right now. Um, so I would say that really council needs to kind of focus on those, those different uses in the, um, that are potentially available in the, in the B3 district. And then i- if you look on your first page, the, the one of six, the memorandum, um, those kind of, um, uh, that, that kind of bottom section, consider the impacts from, admit from consideration. I think those are really good, th- those are some really good things that Ms. Anderson has given us to kind of, or given council to kind of think about. And so just for the, the public, and, and she kind of touched on these, but things that you can't consider in a, in a rezoning request, um, for all kinds of equal protection reasons and other things are ethnicity, religion, income, that is what kind of income level of a potential residential, um, development may bring in, and whether, for instance, in a, in a residential development, whether it's going to be a rent or, or ownership. You can't consider those things by law. What you can consider, however, and so this is kind of getting to what I'm saying, kind of where I think council's, uh, focus probably should be as they're considering it, or whether, where I would suggest that is, the potential uses under the, the, that classification, um, what the, what the neighborhood, um, character is like around that, and certainly we've had quite a bit of, of testimony about that today. Um, you know, traffic considerations, things like utilities, um, you know, schools, you know, the impact that that, you know, the impact that, you know, added what, um, population from a residential development may bring, may, the additional pressures that may put on the school system, just like additional kind of traffic pressures. Um, some of those probably aren't relevant to a, to a B3, um, but those are kind of where I would suggest the focus would need to be, rather than, you know, somebody's other kind of properties. Does that, does that make sense? I know that's kind of a long way to get to, to the answer to your question.
Well, I guess the answer is no, we can't talk about properties.
Yeah. Probably best not, too, because that's, that's probably not where the focus should be, I guess.
But from the information that you gave us, several people that spoke, spoke about traffic, and most of the type businesses that you're speaking about would, in my opinion, would be like Monday through Friday from nine to five.
Typically.
And if anybody drives up and down that 158 highway, you know, that, that's, that's a busy, busy time during, during that time of the day. Um, and, and, but I'm not saying that in a negative. I'm saying it just, it is already a ton of, ton of traffic on that road. Um, and, and a doctor's office, or, or anything business-wise like this. It's not, it's not going to be like what you're saying up on the corner is B4. And, and you know what is in that area. It's, it's a lot of congestion there. And, um, I, I think the B3 would be significantly less impact on your, on the, the property owners or the tenants, or whatever they, they might be. And, you know, your home is your home, whether you're renting it or buying it. It is, it's home. Um, can you, are we allowed to ask a question about vacancies in that, you know, it, it, you all mentioned crime and that type thing. There again, when I think about, uh, what is allowed in that, uh, B3, uh, that destination, uh, it, it looks like very low, low crime impact would be coming from that type of a business. You're just not going to generally get, um, something that's going to cause you a lot of problems from that type of, of business. I, I don't think to it, because most, most of the activity that goes on there is going to be during the daytime. Um, anyway.
I'll, I'll remind council, we're still technically in the, the public hearing part. I don't know if it may be, you know, we need to, to kind of wind that down, and then if council wants to have some discussion.
Will.
I know we kind of got away from it, and maybe I'm as much at fault as anybody, but...
I, I just feel like, you know, everybody needs to know, these, these individuals that are here, I, I just feel like they need to know as much as we can possibly let them know. Uh, but anyway.
That's correct.
I think so, and I don't think we're allowed to ask. My thought is, I, I guess we, we need to move on with what's on the agenda for tonight. All right. Is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you would state your name, please.
I'm Terrell Davis. I reside at 340 East Littleton Road, right on 158, right up down from the church and across from this property. And I agree with a lot that's already been said, but one thing that I did want to point out, because you're talking about that we already have businesses in the area, but they are on the outskirts, at opposite ends of our community, not directly in the middle. And this is what you're trying to do, is put businesses in the middle of our community. Therefore, we are very concerned as to what those businesses will be and how they will impact us, our family, our church, our community. Also, I want to know, would this impact our tax value on our homes? Would it increase what we have to pay in taxes having these businesses there? And also, can you give me an example of a B3 in another residential area?
Um, Mayor Spiegel Chase is an example of B3.
What is that?
Spiegel Chase is off of Becker Drive, um, in that general area where the eye doctor's offices are, um, and then it rolls right into residential. That's an area that is also a B3.
Are you talking about on where the mall is?
In that general area, yes.
Okay, so the houses, the residential is all behind, not in the middle.
Right.
And that's, that's a big difference. Y'all are trying to put this in the middle of our community.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other?
Um, I would have to look at my zoning map to actually confirm any other locations, but that's the first one that I have.
Okay. So yes, I would like to see any other community that has been divided and put business in the middle of it instead of keeping it as a residential as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I would declare that public hearing be closed. The council has a worksheet. Turn to it.
There's two options that are required with the consideration of a rezoning. Um, one is the statement of consistency, and the other one is a final decision. The statement of consistency doesn't have any bearing on the final decision, but it's a procedural aspect to show that, uh, basically the process has been followed, and we've been, we've considered our land use ordinance and our comprehensive plan policies when considering this, and those are listed within the memorandum in your packet as well. So I just want to bring your attention to those two items.
Everybody on page, page five? Okay. Uh, need a motion if someone is so moved to, uh, you got two or three options there? So far, the statement of consistency. Mr. Attorney, I don't think I've ever had a situation where I didn't get a motion.
Well, I, I think you've got, I think the council has maybe three options, and they're kind of sort of listed there. Um, that you can vote to approve the statement of consistency, so you'd need a motion for that. You could vote to, you could, somebody could move to deny the statement of consistency, um, in which case it may make the, the second part of that simpler. Um, or, um, three, the, the council could take no action concerning it. Um, you know, we could have a motion to defer the vote on this until the next meeting or some future time, um, to receive more information. That's a, that's a option that's available to, uh, council as well. So.
Is it appropriate to ask you another question?
Depends on the question.
Well, you can tell me you can't answer it if you can't. If the council does not approve it tonight, or if someone were to make a motion and it was denied, how long before the applicant could resubmit it for, let's just say, a different, like, a different use or classification?
There's no limitation on that.
There's no waiting period.
Okay. That's, that's all we need to know.
So you just want a motion?
Yes, sir. We need a motion of some type to move forward.
I would like to make a motion, uh, to defer this until a later date.
We probably need a date, don't we? Can you look at the next meeting? Maybe thirty, thirty, thirty days?
Say at least.
Not the next meeting, but the next.
Thirty days.
August 20th.
August 20th is the second meeting.
I would like to make a motion that we defer this, uh, any other, um, talk of, about approval or disapproval until the August 20th meeting, August 20, 2024.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Stainback. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those know, that motion will be approved. Okay. Next, we have another hearing. Ms. Anderson, you get to do that one also.
So, um, and the city manager just reminded me about this. The proceeding that we're about to do is a little different, um, from what we just had. Um, the rezoning request was legislative in nature. Um, this is a special use permit request. It still involves land use, but it's a little bit different procedure. And so, um, I think Ms. Anderson and anybody that's going to speak on this one will need to be sworn in. Okay, so they have, all right. Thank you.
Me again. Mayor and city council members and citizens, tonight we are here to hold a quasi-judicial public hearing, also referred to as an evidentiary hearing. What is a quasi-judicial hearing? There are certain areas one must consider when making a quasi-judicial decision. Quasi-judicial decisions are similar to court decisions as you must determine whether the evidence provided to you is in compliance with general law for this particular situation. The land use ordinance will be used as a guide for the standard... The land use ordinance will be used as a guide for the standards that must be met for the development on the proposed property. The board must use its best judgment based on the factual evidence provided. Some essentials for conducting the hearing. Follow procedures. Allow parties with standing to participate. Present evidence and provide testimony. Ensure all witnesses and parties with standing are sworn in prior to the testimony. Decisions must be based on competent material and substantial evidence. And finally, provide written documentation of whether for or against the final decision made in the hearing. The board will review a special use request for duplexes to be located at lots 50 and 52A, Timmy Lane, on Timmy Lane. The board will hold the public hearing and receive sworn testimony and determine if the four findings of fact are true. Consider a motion for a final decision. On June 13th, 2024, the planning department received a special use permit application request from applicant and property owner, Ross Johnson, to allow for duplexes to be located at lots 50 and 52A on Timmy Lane within the city's ETJ, also known as the ex, excuse me, extraterritorial jurisdiction, which lies within the existing R8 residential zoning district. The properties are located within the Robinson subdivision on the southern side of Bowling Road, which was originally developed in the early 90s. The majority of the lots along Timmy Lane were developed as duplexes, including the cul-de-sac of Suzanne Circle to the immediate south. Lots 50 and 52A were not developed during this time, and soon after, the land use ordinance underwent several amendments, one of which deemed duplexes in the R8 zoning district permissible only by a special use permit. Mr. Johnson wishes to develop these properties just as intended within the original subdivision. The applicant is aware of the respective departmental reviews required contingent on approval of the, um, requested special use permit. Those departments include planning and development, code enforcement, the fire department, the Ronacropitz sanitary district, Halifax County environmental health, and NCDOT. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Ronacropitz Daily Herald on Saturday, July 6th and Saturday, July 13th. Affected property owners within 100 foot of the proposed sites were sent on July 1st, and a public hearing notice was posted. Provided on your screen is a larger aerial view identifying these lots. I've also labeled them, so you can see which one is lot 50 and which one is lot 52A. City council shall issue a special use permit if it has evaluated an application through a quasi judicial process and determined that is the requested permit within its jurisdiction according to the table of permissible uses. The requested permit is in the ETJ. The duplexes are authorized within the R8 with a special use permit. The request is to allow for the construction of duplexes at the proposed parcels classified under 1.000 per the land use ordinance section 151-149. Is the applicant completed, excuse me, is the application completed? The application is complete. If completed as proposed in the application, the development will comply with all of the requirements of the land use ordinance. The development will comply with all the requirements of the land use ordinance if completed as proposed in the application. The following items are to be considered. Ingress and egress to the lot and proposed structures, especially by pedestrians and automobiles. Staff finds this to be true. This site has frontage on Timmy Lane, an improved state of North Carolina road, with parking on both sides of the street, along with street end curb girdoring. Off-street parking and loading effect on adjacent properties. Staff finds little potential nor negative impact on neighboring properties. The proposed use of the property is unlikely to cause any traffic generation issues. Refuge disposal effect on adjacent property with similar uses. Staff finds no likely negative effect should occupants utilize common practices in refuge disposal. Halifax County Waste Management provides refuge and disposal services for that area. Utilities are available. Um, staff believes this is true, with connections and extensions coordinated with appropriate entities. The type, dimensions, and character of screening and buffering, um, are they satisfactory? Staff finds screening to be adequate for a use that replicates the surrounding area. Signs and lighting effect on adjacent properties. Staff believes exterior lighting is to be of the norm for a similar property. And required yards, open space, and existing trees. Staff believes this is probably true. The lot is currently undeveloped at this time. Staff finds a special use permit request to be consistent with the area land uses and supported by the comprehensive plan. Um, section six of the future land use, residential land use of the comprehensive plan, um, says to consider allowing different housing densities to abut one another as long as proper buffering and design is provided as needed and traffic generated by such land use does not mix within the neighborhood. And one of the goals in the comprehensive plan states to support infill development as an action essential to continued development. The land use ordinance states that the R8 district is designed to accommodate single-family dwellings, um, that differ primarily in density as determined by the minimum lot size. Duplexes are permitted with a special use permit. If it is the consensus of the council that the requested permit will not materially endanger the public health or safety, staff believes this is probably true. The applicant shall be required to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local ordinances, an assessment of the previously referenced seven items used to evaluate areas of concern, to indicate no specific endangerment to the public health or safety. Will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties? Staff believes this is probably true. Staff finds no specific reasons for potential negative impacts of the value of adjoining or abutting property. Will it be in harmony with the area? Staff believes this is probably true. The proposed use will be residential in nature and in character with the existing surrounding residential land uses. The entirety of Timmy Lane consists of duplexes with the exception of two single-family dwellings. In my report, I stated one, it is two. I just want to correct that. Um, will be in general conformity with the comprehensive development plan, thoroughfare plan, or other plan officially adopted by city council? Staff finds this to be true. The plans as submitted will agree with the policies of the comprehensive development plan, thoroughfare plan, as well as the land use ordinance, and other officially adopted plans of the city. The comprehensive future, excuse me, the comprehensive plan, future land use map, designates this area as suitable for residential development. The property is located within the existing extraterritorial jurisdiction, and staff believes it is in conformity with the previously stated policies. Subject to your questions, that concludes my presentation. Um, if, if you have no questions for me, it would now be appropriate to open the hearing.
Anybody have any questions for the planning director? Okay, at this time, I would declare that public hearing be open. We have one individual that signed up for it, Mr. Pierce. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? We can get you to sign the paper. Come forward, Mr. Pierce. Good evening. All right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, audience, uh, I'm representing my daughter and son-in-law, uh, far as, they own land over there, right, the house right beside the property. And I'm a firm believer, if somebody bought it, they afford to get it, just theirs. I mean, they can build what they want on it, as long as they don't, you know, this, I'm in the country, I don't have to worry with this stuff. I got a hundred acres right in me, don't worry about it. But, uh, what I was concerned about, my main thing, might be the cart jumping the horse. Um, this property was pretty much anybody knows is wetland over there, and the drainage is just terrible. That's the main thing I'm concerned about is, we got the drainage straight on her house, and if something is right beside it, because nothing's been built there, pretty much for this reason, since this development was started by Timmy Robson. Just duplexes down there, there's no prob, like I said, no problem with it. It's just, um, might be the cart jumping the horse, but we just want to be sure that they get the drainage where nothing drains on her property, ditches or the back prop, the other folks didn't come, you know, that's their deal. I'm just concerned about that house and the property in the corner, you know, where they get the water runoff. This might, like I said, be cart jumping the horse.
Okay, is that anything that we can provide, any information on tonight, or is that a, a later date? I, I assume you're speaking about the water that comes out of the, the city property?
The water out of the land, yes, I got pictures from the, well, this property is wet, it stays wet. I can, if you have, Joey, Joey's got pictures on his phone, I've been over there, he's been actually, they let the property grow, I mean, it went, I got drainage over there too, but it went, they got it out of hand, and he's been, actually took, uh, his lawnmower, and it's so wet, I couldn't cut it with a tractor. But it wasn't mine, I was just going to take on and get it right, but, you know, but they, he's been cutting it, and you can see it's wet. I mean, it's a wet property, it's going to have to be built up. And I've pretty much been doing this stuff, septic tanks and drainage and stuff, for 50 years, so I kind of know what I'm talking about on that.
Is there water and sewer over there?
Uh, there's sewer and water over there, it's a tap in front of the yard. That's no problem. It's just the drainage off, when they build it up, they're going to have to build it up. I, like I said, don't hold, they, two, I know a good two or three foot to make it suitable for a building, from experience and seeing. And it would, uh, that would make water runoff into the other properties, because they've, it's widely known that that place over there is just terrible on drainage.
That, that's really, and, and to, to kind of answer your question, I guess answer the mayor's question too, that's really more of a, the, the owner's kind of responsibility. That is, through this process and, and something in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, we don't have any control over the, the drainage patterns, um, over there. So, so that would be something that the private owner, when they develop it, would have to, would have to build it up. But as far as this process, we, we don't have any way to, to really control that.
Okay, that's, that's what I would say, I might be the cart jumping the horse, because I've never dealt with this stuff before, like I said.
Do you understand what we're speaking about? I, I would assume you probably do, ETJ.
Is, basically, they want to put a duplex there, y'all give them permission to build something there.
It's outside of the city limits.
Yes.
But the city, it comes under the city.
Takes care of it, yeah. But she's on city sewer and water and all that.
Okay.
I think the actual sewer probably, what they changed all over is across the road and starts on back toward Greenbrier and back, uh, Simmons Street, I think, over down the other side.
Okay, was, does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, I'm just, I just had to come, we'll have to come back to another, if he, otherwise, we ain't have a problem with them doing it, approving it. Just, well, I'm just looking at the concern of the drainage when, for her house, because that's her first house, she won't, probably won't move no time soon, did a lot of improvement there, and I just don't want to see a problem.
Okay. You, you never did state your name?
Uh, James E. Pierce, Pierce Concrete.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the matter? If not, I would declare that the public hearing be closed. So we have four statements that we need to vote on, and it said that all four of them have to be approved before number five, the final decision. If all four of them are not approved, the final decision cannot be approved. Is everybody on, um, the page where the worksheet is? Okay. Council believes this is true, the following motion is to be recommended. You have the motion there before you.
May I like to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Um, based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated July 1st, 2024, it is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will not materially endanger the public health or safety, and it is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Stainback.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bell. Is there any more discussion on this matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion will be approved. Will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining or abutting property.
That would be, that would be the second one. Just finish the first one.
Okay. We need a motion on the second one.
Um, based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated July 1st, 2024, it is consensus of the city council that the request permit be, I mean, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And it's, and it is consensus of the city council that the request permit be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located.
That, that last part, the way it's kind of stated, is I think the motion is the main part, that's, that's kind of what it's, I think, getting to the, yeah.
See?
You need me to repeat it?
Maybe for clarity's sake, just because this is a quasi judicial hearing, I'm sorry.
Based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated July 1st, 2024, it is consensus of the city council that the request permit will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Bell. Do he hear second to his motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strickland. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Third one, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located.
Mayor?
Ms. Bryant?
Based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated July 1st, 2024, it is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located.
Okay. Have a motion by Ms. Bryant. Do he hear second to her motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bell. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion be approved. Item D will be in general conformity with the comprehensive development plan, thoroughfare plan, or other plan officially adopted by the city council.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated July 1st, 2024, it is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will be in, in general conformity with the comprehensive development plan, thoroughfare plan, and other plan officially adopted by the city council.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Strickland. Do he hear second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stainback. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We will move on to section five, which is the final decision. Have the motion there before you on that one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on that, please. Based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated July 1st, 2024, it is the consensus of the city council that the requested special use permit be granted to Ross Johnson for duplexes located on Timmy Lane and Halifax County Parcels 0911792 and 93, with the conditions set forth by the land use ordinance.
Okay, motion by Mr. Stainback, second to his motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bell. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion and the grant, uh, would be, request would be approved. Okay, I call Ms. Johnson for finance business, some budget amendments.
Good evening. I'm brazen, I'm right up. Um, so, I would like, um, our police, uh, department took over the Safe Kids Grant from Halifax County, and that's an organization that, um, provides information and supports programs that are centered around, um, the well-being of children. Anyway, we received our first, uh, funds for that grant, and so I would like you to consider a motion to adopt budget ordinance. I would like you to consider a motion to adopt budget ordinance 2024 dot 16 in the amount of $2,150.52.
Motion. Okay. We'll need a motion to adopt this budget ordinance?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt budget ordinance number 2024 dot 16 in the amount of $2,150.52 for the Safe Kids Grant.
Councilwoman Bryant, a motion. Second to her motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bill. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Move on to the next one.
Um, this is, uh, budget ordinance 2024 17, these are capital funds, um, that were previously approved by council that we have not utilized yet. And so I'm just asking if we can, uh, carry those capital funds forward, um, in the amount of 342, 288, 73.
Anybody have questions from the council on any of these? Can anyone here tell us what the economic development incentive for $200,000 was allocated for?
Yes. That was set by the council, uh, with the American Rescue Plan funds that these, that were offset after taking the standard allowance in the American Rescue Plan funds. And so the council approved several items, um, for use of those, um, funds. And the economic development incentive was one that could be used to, um, entice development or within the historic district, um, that there would be an application requested for renovation and so forth, to help spur economic development. And we haven't received a request for those funds at this time.
We have not?
No, we haven't identified a specific use for them.
That's what I was trying to get. Where, where, where was it spent? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else has a question, call for a motion at this time?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024 dot 17 in the amount of 3,400, uh, I mean, 3, 304 to 2,288 dollars and 73 cents to Carrow Capital Funds from fiscal year 2023 through 24.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Bill.
Second.
Second by Mr. Steinback. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion will be carried. One more, I think. No, that was all. Changing it to ten.
I'm not sure if you're ready.
I think so.
All right. For our next upcoming scheduled meeting is, um, or our first meeting in August, excuse me, is scheduled for August the 6th, the Tuesday. That is also the same night that the, uh, City of Rona Rapids Police Department and other local, um, law enforcement offices will be gathering to celebrate National Night Out. And that will actually be held this year in Rona Rapids, and we're the host community. Um, it's a big community event, um, with law enforcement education and, uh, education and other vendors and so forth. Um, good family event. And that is scheduled to start at 6:00 PM. And so we'd ask for council's consideration to start our August the 6th meeting a little bit earlier so that, um, any of the business could be taken care of in a timely manner and allowing for full participate, full participation at the National Night Out event on Tuesday the 6th. Um, 4:00 is proposed, but, um, just ask for council's consideration and change in the start time of that meeting.
Nobody has any questions of the manager? We call for a motion to make this change?
Mayor, I'd like to make, to make a motion to change the starting time of the August 6th, 2024 regular city council meeting to 4:00 PM.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. Do you hear second to her motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Strickland. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Thank you, ma'am. Then your report is next.
Yes, sir. Um, just want to mention a few things going on. Um, the police department has rescheduled. It's taking it to the streets, um, event that was originally scheduled for two, or, excuse me, Thursday, July 11th. And that has been, um, scheduled now for July the 25th downtown, um, to walk around the neighborhood and get to know, uh, residents and individuals there. Uh, it's a community event as well. Um, the police department has hired two cadets that will start BLET on August the 12th. And meanwhile, they are getting to learn more about the community and, um, the profession as they await beginning their schooling for it. Uh, the fire department also has, um, three individuals that will be signed up to attend the fire academy that begins the first week of August as well. And, um, the fire department as well has had some good news here lately, a bit of it. After many years of being told no with grant applications, they have been successfully awarded a few very competitive grants, uh, one being the Firehouse Subs Grant. Um, that is one of the most competitive ones out there, but that was for $37,000 to provide for electronic or battery operated extrication equipment for the new fire truck. Um, the other, now notice that we've been, or that has been received is from ECU North Grant for $9,000 to purchase pulse oximeters, uh, to help, uh, identify the conditions of really anyone who's affected by smoke and fire inhalation, um, from those duties. And then second, or thirdly, um, we have received notification from FEMA that once again, the Assistance for Firefighters Grant, uh, will impact our community with $65,000 to, uh, replace some of the hoses and nozzles, um, for the new fire trucks. So effectively, it helps reduce our, uh, anticipated costs, but, um, very much needed and appreciated. And the efforts by the departments to apply for grants and receive those, uh, is commended. Um, the fire department will have a family-friendly safety fair on Friday, August the 2nd at Kirkwood. So we'll go from Friday the 2nd to Tuesday the 6th for activities, uh, there. Um, Parks and Recreation Department were coined as the Department of Fun by many children in the last few weeks, have been extremely busy with, um, camps and programming taking place at majority of our facilities. Uh, I acknowledge we've had some complaints or some concerns about the outdoor pool conditions. Um, and I will recognize our Parks and Recreation staff, um, between Kelly Daughtry and Ryan Newsome, and the lifeguards and pool staff and Josh Sammons as well, really went above and beyond to ensure the safety of the pool and the swimmers that were, have been using it routinely, um, between chemicals and even, um, we staff called and had the health department come out and check it, just to ease any parental concerns. Um, the summer library program, uh, will have its final kids concert, uh, to wrap up the summer program on July the 19th, so this Friday at 1:00 at Kirkwood. Finance is preparing for the audit for the fiscal year 24 and closing out the, um, that fiscal year as we have entered a new one as of July 1. And finally, uh, the Chamber of Commerce will have its music in the park, last scheduled series, uh, at Centennial Park on Friday, July the 26th. Subject to your questions, that concludes my report. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, I was gonna defer another item for attorney.
Um, I, so I think as, as probably most of the public knows, um, the city was served with a lawsuit, um, Friday, uh, morning. Um, and I, I think we need to acknowledge that and just address it briefly. Um, the plaintiff in that lawsuit is the former chief of police, um, in Rona Rapids, uh, for the Rona Rapids Police Department, Bobby Martin. Um, he was terminated from his employment with the city in April of 2000, uh, in April of 2023. Um, and in addition to the city of Rona Rapids in this lawsuit, he's named the city manager. And, um, he's also named, uh, Richardson and Davis Investigating, Investigative Consulting Group. Um, that is a third party, so an outside firm that was hired by the city in 2003, um, to conduct a review of some issues going on at the Rona Rapids Police Department. And, um, produced a report for us that was relied on by the city manager in that termination decision. I don't think there's any secret about that. Um, and so uh, there, there's been some demands kind of made either, you know, in, 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 in public, um, to specific city officials or to, um, through folks talking on social media about the city responding to that or, or answering those claims, um, immediately. And so I'll just say to that kind of, first of all, um, that that's not really the proper forum for us to answer something of this weight. Um, the plaintiff, uh, Mr. Martin, has been given the benefit of the legal system, and he has filed a formal complaint. He's had over a year and a half, or a year and some change, to formulate and to construct the allegations that he's made against the city. And so while it's not going to take us as long to respond to those, we are going to do it in a thorough fashion. And when that comes, um, we will let the public and the media know. And, and it's not going to be a year down the road. It's going to be within a reasonable time period as required by the rules of civil procedure. Um, and so I'll just, I'll just say that kind of as a, as a first, um, kind of piece of this. Um, two, you know, and I think this, and I think any, any person kind of understands this, the allegations in a lawsuit are merely allegations. They are not proven. They've not been vetted by anybody before they've been filed. And as I said, there will be a response that comes from the city. Um, two more things I would like to, um, note as well. Um, the, um, prior to Mr. Martin's termination, as I said, um, Richardson and Davis, the investigative firm that we hired, did produce a lengthy investigative report, um, based not only on interviews, but also on information and, and data that they received as part of their investigation and that they've discovered. And so, um, and I know that back when, when all of this was happening and those, uh, those officers were on suspension, on suspension, prior to Chief Martin's termination in April of 2023, I know there was a lot of public scrutiny about, well, we want you to release this information. We want you to, um, to tell us what's in the report. Why are you terminating them, things like that. And the response was that we can't tell you that, that the law prevents us from revealing that kind of employee data about a, about our personnel. Um, even in situations where you have, and you can use several different adjectives, but I'm just gonna choose the, the one difficult, um, employees, um, that you may have to take adverse personnel action against. Um, the law really limits what we can reveal about that. And so, um, that's why nothing up until this point, other than the information that we had terminated him, that the city has been able to respond to any of that. Um, some of that situation may now have changed because he's filed this lawsuit. And so I'm not, I'm never gonna say that it's ever gonna be open season on what is in an employee's personnel file for a public employer like the city. But one of the things that we're gonna be evaluating as we kind of evaluate this lawsuit and we evaluate the response, is going to be how much information we can legally release. And so, um, I would say for folks that want more information, that want to find out about what's the, the, the details of this, um, to hear the city's side of it, um, stay tuned, because that's, that's going to be coming, but we're going to do it in a, in a careful fashion. Um, and finally, I'll, I'll say too, like all municipalities, the city of Rona Rapids, um, is required to cooperate with our liability carrier. Um, and a liability carrier is just a fancy, the fancy term that attorneys use for our insurance company. Um, and so just as, as you might imagine, you know, if you're involved in a, um, if you're at fault in a car accident, and you've got insurance on your car, the person who, who you injured in that, in that wreck, one of the reasons you have insurance is so that they're not coming after you and bringing you into court and going after your personal assets. You have an insurance company that steps in the way, and they're the ones that are essentially on the line for the costs involved in defending that. And so the effect of that is, is that to a very large extent, um, I know there's been some questions about as far as, well, who pays for, um, the response to this? That's gonna be the insurance company that does that. Um, that's what they exist to do, and that's what they would do, that's what an insurance company would do, just as if you had somebody that was injured at your home, and you have homeowner's insurance, just if you had somebody injured in a motor vehicle accident, and you were the driver that was at fault and you had car insurance. And so we've got to cooperate with them, and they, and I guess I say that to say that they've got to have time to review these claims, to review all of the data that's involved here in this investigative report, and then to cooperate with us as we kind of formulate our response to this. Um, so I, I just say all that to say, um, we are taking it seriously. It's not being ignored by anybody on this council or by anybody in the city of Rona Rapids. But at this early date, it's, it's going to take us some time to be able to respond to it in a thorough fashion. And we're gonna be deliberate about it, and we're gonna be thorough about it. And so I look forward to being able to get those responses out there to the public. So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Finance?
Okay. Um, as of June, uh, 30, 2024, um, the general fund, um, receipts totaled 17.8 million, and the expenditures totaled 17.5 million. Um, revenues exceeded expenditures by 284,000. As of June, we're at 90.3% of our budget. Um, we still have, uh, a few more revenue streams. We have our June avalum, our June motor vehicle, our May and June sales tax, but we did get that, and that was around 403,000. So we are well over that budget. Um, home harmless for May and June, and, uh, June residential and commercial side ways. So we are right on or above what we had projected that we would receive as far as revenue.
You say we got May and June.
We got, we got May, not June.
And May's 700?
403. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
And I made this so you could read it better. Can you see it better?
Ma'am?
I made this so you could read it better.
Oh. Hope you made it bigger.
I did.
I mean, the numbers bigger.
I did.
I, I mean, the number numbers, you know.
Wow, you know, I can't do that.
Some people might want to know how much we're gonna have at the end of the year. Can you tell us how much we're gonna have at the end of the year?
Not yet. We haven't finished receiving everything.
Give us something close.
I'll get back to you.
I'll let you off on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. What else we got to do? Any, any other business coming for us tonight? Those of you all that are still here, I thank you for coming. I thank you for your ideas. Um, the seats are pretty warm up here tonight, where we've been sitting in some difficult decisions that, that have to be made. But, um, I, I hope you know that we take what you say, uh, and certainly take it under consideration, or we would have acted tonight. We, we want to do what is at least the best thing we can for, for everybody. So we'll take this up at a later date. So, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion by Mr. Steinback.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bill. All in favor? Aye.